Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the October 18, 2023 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Michelle, would you please do a roll call? Here.
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 Thank you, Michelle. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have personnel contractual and student matters to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the October 18, 2023 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call? Here.
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 Thank you, Michelle. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one set of minutes from the September 27, 2023 business meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the Board of Education, you may do so by approaching the podium. Please just state your first and last name.
Sure. Margaret.
And, okay, sorry. And just to let everyone know, you can all approach at various times, and then the superintendent will respond during his update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Because we can't hear you.
Andy, can you help us?
Andy will check the microphone.
We'll see if he can raise the volume for you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Sure.
So if you could just state your name. I didn't hear it. I'm so sorry.
My name is Margaret DiBono.
Hi, Margaret.
My property is over on Ellsworth Avenue, one from the school property. And I'm here to talk about the flooding that we continually have. I've been in my house for a long time, raised a family here in Harrison, went to Harrison But now I'm getting flooding. We were in our house 37 years before we had the first water in the basement. But now with every little trickle, we have to do something with the Ida Henry Coalition there. It was really bad. All my stuff in the basement. But I didn't have living space. I was fortunate. My, all my neighbors have living space in the basement. And it was like, it was like a war zone with all the stuff that was out. It was really, really sad. So I want to call to attention that with the duck pond, whatever you're calling it now, there's no ducks there, but we used to call it the duck pond. Everybody used to bring their children. Feed the ducks, feed the ducks. Since it's been overgrown with cattails or whatever the proper name is for it, the flooding has worsened bit by bit by bit. So I'm saying this is a natural place for it to go. The topography of this land didn't, it didn't just happen overnight. It's just bit by bit. But now we're seeing it worsen, and it's totally congested with that. It needs to be dredged. That's the main thing that needs to be dredged. Of course, you're going to have to, it's partially fenced, but there's a stone wall that's disintegrating there that was built by my husband's father. That's how long ago that was. And people are in the same boat as I am, like we could take across Nelson Avenue. We've done that. We've taken my children in a rowboat across with the ducks on Nelson Avenue. So now the New York City people are looking for a place for their water to go. We don't need to look. It's already here. It just needs to be dredged. They're looking for all type of green infrastructures. But we have ours. It's right there. It just needs some upgrading. We don't want any rain gardens in our, at our houses. I have new neighbors there. I think they're in their house probably two weeks. And of course, they had flooding. And not flooding into the street, but flooding coming from the school. There used to be a creek that ran from the middle school property. It was covered over. The places for the natural water to run, the natural plain of it, have been destroyed, filled in, everything filled in. And I understand you need fields. I'm totally agreeing with that because I had children who played sports. But it has done damage to the homes around. And we've had, in Crystal Park is what I like to call it, no overbuilding. You know, you say, oh, there's overbuilding, overbuilding. And yes, there is in other parts of Harrison, but not in our neighborhood. It's coming. It's coming. But the overbuilding has not been, we haven't any crunch with the land. So I thank you for listening, and I would appreciate sincere, honest sympathy about the plight that we're going through because I, as I said, I could see it through a historical view, that we weren't having it, and now we have it. And now we have it with the, any, any kind of steady rain, there's water. And I don't have floor drains for it to come up. I don't have sump pump. I don't have any of those things because I didn't need them. Now I have two, this, that. So I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. How are you? Robert Porto. I live next to Maggie. One Allen Place has everybody. Mr. DiLorenzo, you did a good job at the graduation, and I thank you all for being here. I really do. It's a labor of love. Outside of this room, too, you get a lot of flack, so, so thank you. So I just want to be involved. I know that people in Genesee Trail are ready to go. I foiled if Leonard Jackson was available, was being used by the school. I think maybe they may be using him. And I know flooding is not really, well, first of all, was the agenda on the website? Where? Seems buried.
Well, we're happy to show you, Rob, but go carry on.
Okay. Because it really is.
The district clerk will show you. It's always in the same place, but we'll help you find it.
All right. Yeah, I'd like it up closer. So, so yeah, basically, I'm standing here because I want to be involved. Mr. Dr. Wolf, we've walked around the duck pond.
We have.
1970, your hair was black. Okay? So, flakish. Yeah, so was mine. You know, I started in 1996 trying to get that pond. That pond is absence of malice. And unfortunately, Dr. Wolf, maybe Joan Tiberzi, and I blame Steve Malphatano, typical, real, real good example of absence of malice. You have no responsibility. The people of Harrison have suffered at a disgusting pond, and that pond used to be an icon. I started in 1996. I stood in front of, and I'm not saying this to be proud, I'm saying this to be humble because it's really upsetting. 1996, okay? Started there. I was in front of this board eight-plus times. I walked the pond with Dr. Wolf, of course, like I said. I hosted the school board and legislators at Rite Town Park. Rite Town Park had a similar pond, and that doesn't have any flow. And they made a nice pond. People go by the beach, this is by Oakland Beach. And I hosted school board and legislators down at Rite Town Park. Marty Rigowsky came, Joan Tiberzi came, but no action. Town board many times because, you know, oh, we don't own it. We own the water. You own the, you know, the school owns the, so it was a, I have two pockets, and I just want them, you know, I don't care who owns that pond. It should be clean no matter what. And I had rpond.org, which I'll probably sell one day because it's a great domain name, but Harrison, I was in the Harrison Review, had an article, Neighbor Cries Foul. And this is like a long time. I had a meeting at the library, 30 people plus. We had coffee. We had sandwiches and everything. I have pictures of that. I was in the Journal News. I have a 501(c)(3), 28-page document. You talked to the federal government to get this approved. And I, you know, we've raised $5,000. I've had people take their money back. It's like, okay, well, it's hopeless, $1,000 here and there. I had the architect that did the pond in Rite Town Park, Chris Cohen, and, you know, he was all ready to go. I had Mr. Borelli ready to dredge it. I had basically the grant money in the bag because I had a grant writer that said, $750,000, not a problem. Federal government's giving away money every single year, and you people are silly for not taking it, sitting on our hands. So we could have gotten the money. And, you know, it never flooded in my house. And then they put in the, the field, the turf field, which now everybody's, people are starting to worry about turf fields. So now what used to be percolating grass is now a big holding pond that just gets the water and brings it to my neighborhood. The parking lot out here, everything goes right into the drain. There is no percolation at all. All the grass has been covered. And so basically, I want to be included in anything that you're going to do because I've been working for this 25 years, and one of my biggest regrets is walking into my mother's kitchen and bitching and, and, you know, bringing everybody down because of this pond. My father in the wheelchair, who would love to go and see it. Okay, no ducks. There should be some activity. It should be a learning experience. It's a great resource, and I'm trying to struggle not to say certain words because it's a great resource for people, and we just let it go. And it's a disgrace. So now the people in Genesee think the duck pond is flooding. It's not. It always flooded. There's plans maybe to go down Union Avenue. We know about the grant money that's going to be in our neighborhood. So a lot of things are going to happen, and Dr. Wolf, please include me because this has been a real long time, and I'm getting really upset. And, okay, well, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't live in the neighborhood of Crystal Street, but I just.
Just for the record, could you state your name?
Karen Moore.
Thank you.
Just here to support my neighbors because this is Harrison, and I think it's about time that we all started to support each other and think of this as a community. I'm just wondering, is there a commitment here from the board to meet with the town and try to resolve this problem? Because it's, it's been going on for a long time. And I, I just want to know, you know, are we going to kick the can down the road and let somebody else worry about it? Or are we going to take care of this problem? Because this is one flooding problem in Harrison. There are many. And I think if we start to make an effort to resolve one problem, you know, maybe it'll motivate others who are in charge to look at the other problems that we're having in the town as far as flooding. So I just basically want to know, is there a commitment from this board to meet and do something about this?
We'll respond when everybody's finished, so.
Okay.
I have a few questions. I promise I'll answer everything that is, that's been asked of everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I live on Allen Place. Mrs. DiBono is my back, back door neighbor. The Portos are my side neighbors. Robert's grandparents and my grandparents bought the property 100 years ago. Sisters lived side by side on that block. I've lived there for the better part of 70 years. Never saw flooding like we had a few years ago with, was it Ida? Hurricane Ida. We all know Nelson Avenue floods. Crystal Street flooded so badly, we couldn't get our cars in or out for a couple days. We had to ride up to the Rod and Gun Club, which is Veterans Park up in the back, and leave our cars there. We couldn't get in. We couldn't get out. It's gotten so bad since that turf field was put in, what, three, four years ago? The water is just everywhere. You look around, and Allen Place was completely underwater with probably two or three feet of water. Crystal Street was underwater. We can't get in. We can't get out. Something has to be done. That turf field was a nightmare. The water has no place to go, and we are feeling it. Crystal Street was covered with furniture from end to end, as Mrs. DiBono pointed out. It looked like a war zone. People had lost everything, beds, furniture. It was very sad. One young man in our neighborhood had just moved into the house in August, and he lost everything again about three weeks later. And it's tragic what's going on, and something needs to be done.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Why don't we go in order?
Yeah.
Yeah. Why didn't you say that we're going?
Okay, we're going to go slightly out of order, and I'm going to go ahead and let Dr. Wolf respond to all the public comments, and then I'll do my president's update after.
We typically would wait, but we don't want you to wait for the answer, so we're going to go out of order. I'm going to do my very best to tell you everything I know and everything that we have tried to do and are continuing to try to do. The first is let me answer, answer the question about a commitment. So this is my 22nd year as superintendent. That's a very long time. I have tried as hard as I can with every administration, and I'm not throwing rocks because I don't think that's a smart thing to do. People always do the best they can. The flooding problem, I understand that we love the pond, and the pond should be fixed. The pond is not going to fix the problem, but it would help. So let's just acknowledge that. It has been said by some that the school district is not cooperative. Nothing could be further from the truth. And I'll say to you what I say in private meetings because I have nothing to hide. I have tried unsuccessfully to get federal money, primarily because I'm not the town. I'm the school district. This is a regional flooding problem. But I have studied ad nauseam the impact of flooding on this area and how it happens. In 2009, I was approached by the town with a plan to mitigate some of the intense flooding. That proposal, and I'm not criticizing you, I'm explaining it, was to take the existing field before it was turfed and to lower it by five feet. And to have all of the runoff from the roads and the pond be diverted onto that field. And then eventually to, I guess, go into the stream and disappear. The other part of that plan was in order for that to work, there were going to be a series of upstream dams created. My doctorate is in organizational leadership, not in water management. The board didn't say no. We hired an outside expert, an engineer, to say, take a look at this plan and tell us reasonably. Will it create a safety hazard for kids? The fact that they're going to be lying on a field two days after all of the street oil, this phosphorus and things is on that field. That was one question we asked. We asked, will this in fact help the problem? The next time I heard, now remember, that question was raised in 2008, was in 2016, when we decided, and I know that your perception is that the turf field hurt, the turf field actually has solved the problem because what you're likely not aware of is that is a flood zone, not a flood plain. We put 900,000 gallons of water storage under that field, and since doing that, the stream never overflows because the water is released slowly over time. When the town came to me, and let me finish, I heard you, and asked the question, what else can we do? Here's what we offered. We said, take Feeley Field, take Nelson Avenue, take the parking lot, and build as much underground water storage as is necessary to accommodate the floods of a 100-year flood so that they don't go down to the Brentwood in undersized pipes and overwhelm the neighborhood. I haven't had a response to that yet. Most recently, actually, I'll give you the date, on July 25, I was contacted by two state legislators and the current mayor, and he asked if I would participate in helping the town acquire a grant. I wrote that grant. The town got $2 million. One of the conditions, I'm sorry, Andy, there we go, this proposal was that they had to agree to rectify the pipes under Nelson Avenue and to bring the duck pond, using some of that money, back to its full vigor. So whether it means taking the silt out, renovating it, that's not for me to decide. But that was a precondition for me helping them to write the grant, which they have now received. I'm not about, and I love what you said, we need to come together. We're not trying to be an obstacle, but some of the things that we are saying are not in fact accurate based on the studies that I have seen. I'm not a water expert. We were told, do not build a field there because if you do, it won't survive unless you do something to mitigate flooding. There's all kinds of flooding. Some comes from one part, some comes from another. Stuff that's in the front of this area is not from back. The only time it backflows is when the tide comes up. You don't know this, but I do. The pipes under Nelson Avenue are actually pitched in the wrong direction. So instead of going this way, they go this way. When the water reaches a certain level, it comes back, no matter what. And there is no solution that is inexpensive because the floodwater is coming from all the way across Harrison and the trails. So if we want to be serious about this, this is what I suggest. In 2010, dropping the field five feet, including the town engineer's own assessment, doesn't solve the problem. What solves the problem is a large-scale retention system that holds and releases it slowly over time. We're more than willing to help. As a matter of fact, I have helped. I'm still trying to help. They have $2 million. I'm still waiting for the finals of that proposal. When it comes, I'm telling you, I'll read you the preconditions. A prerequisite is, any water retention flood-paid bench, that's what it's called, created on or adjacent to school property must include safety features to ensure the floodplain benches are inaccessible to students and the general public. You don't want people drowning. The second, as part of this new flood mitigation plan, some grant and/or town funds must be expended to improve the viability of the Harrison Avenue floodplain, bench, and duck pond located on the Harrison School property. The third part, I don't have to read, says that they will agree to maintain that in perpetuity. You mentioned it was a viable pond. It was. Do you know what's caused the problem with the pond? It's the silt from the road runoff. So I want you to think like a school system or think like a homeowner. Some of you have pipes that aren't yours that run under your property. The pipe that fills the Harrison Duck Pond comes from under Nelson Avenue, Union Avenue. It exits onto Nelson Avenue. It goes all the way across the middle school into the Brentwood. If one of those pipes breaks, is it the school district's responsibility to fix that pipe? Do you know, many, many years, I waited to repair the parking lot in front of LMK. Do you know why I waited? Because I was trying to work in partnership with the town to say, if you're going to fix this, let's not spend good money after bad. I don't want to repave. Ultimately, when we renovated the school building, we fixed the pipes that run under the parking lot. I didn't fix all the pipes.
You made them bigger?
All, we didn't make them bigger at all. We reconnected them. They were crushed. So, listen, myths are myths. Logic is logic. Conspiracy theories are conspiracy theories. We're on your side. We have tried really hard, and we're going to continue to try, to make this better. But it is not a simple solution. It requires people with expertise to commit time, effort, and money. And I'm saying to you, I'm speaking on behalf of the board because I know where they stand. If we can partner and give you property to create water storage, we're willing to do that. We've always been willing to do that. We're just not willing to sign on to something that makes it unsafe for kids or unsafe for human beings. And I promise you, it's not time for a discussion. We can just talk offline because this is an open meeting. My door is open. So if you want to talk about this further as a group, I met today with a group called the Town Flood Committee. Lovely people. They didn't know any of this history, and I'm going to say again, I am not here criticizing the town. That does, it does none of us any good. What I want to do is truly partner at solutions, not do this. That's not what I do. And I know you think somehow that that field caused a problem. I had engineers study, and we spent more money on what's under the field than what's on top of it because we were worried about our neighbors. What we wanted to do was stop that stream. Our basement used to flood here. The stream would raise up, and it would come into the school. It hasn't done that since the time that field. And if you went out and looked at that field during this flood, the water was trickling out of those pipes because it's being held in place. What we need is a system that holds all the water in place until it's safe for it to be released. Otherwise, we are not going to solve this problem, and it really requires a commitment to do something much bigger than digging a hole in a field. So I hear you. I respect you. I care about you. I promise you that's true. I want to make this better, and we, we, this Board of Education, will work hand in glove with the town. And I don't know if you're aware that they received this grant. They did. It's over $2 million, and the mayor, because he's a very gracious man, will say out loud that I was a full partner and wrote the grant. And I'm not saying that because, oh, look what I did. We're partnering. We want this to work. This is one community. So thank you so much for coming, and know that I heard you. I wrote down everybody's name and everything you said, and we're going to keep working. How can you help? Encourage more partnership. Let's do something, I don't think the $2 million, quite honestly, will solve the problem. So let's think more seriously about what is a solution, not a Band-Aid. And ultimately, I will never, as superintendent, do anything that's going to jeopardize children. And I, we probably all agree on that. So thank you very much. I can't ask questions and answers now because, but I'm happy to see you tomorrow. Give my office a call. I'll talk to you person to person, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep. And you all have a good night and stay safe.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You don't need to. I have hundreds, but if you'd like to, just give them to the, give them to the district clerk. She'll take them for you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to quick update with some exciting news happening within the district. Once again, our high school debate team with an excellent performance and a big congratulations at the National Bronx Tournament this past weekend. Out of 116 debaters from around the country, Jack Borman, Reese Pottash, Jack Gessner, and Brooke Sciano all reached elimination round. So Jack Borman was the 10th speaker, and Brooke was one of the top 20 speakers. So congratulations to our ever-successful debate team. Another very exciting recognition for student playwriting, one of our high school students who lists as Bravo was recognized by the New York State Theater Education Association Ulysses Bravo, was recognized by the New York State Theater Education Association in the 2023 Student Playwriting Competition. Ulysses submitted his play after being inspired when attending the Student Playwright Showcase at last year's conference. He actively participates in the High School Playhouse and footlight players and is devoted to his theater classes. And Ulysses will continue working with a playwriting mentor and attend the student conference in January. His work will be performed by students and directed by professionals in education theater.
Yeah, I'm going to try to get up there and see that. We are so pumped about that accomplishment. That's just incredible.
Extremely impressive. He's, he's definitely found his path.
He has.
Our marching band performed and delighted spectators at the annual It's Great to Live in Harrison Parade. And thankfully, after the never-ending rain, we had a really lovely day with the sun out for the parade. Parsons School just celebrated Wellness Day with various activities and learning experiences. The Harrison High School varsity athletes led sessions in field hockey, track, baseball, football, basketball, soccer, volleyball, tennis, and some of the dance team members choreographed a special dance for the Parsons students. And the high school, school counselors presented a lesson aligned for the state standards for K through 5 school counseling called Big Deal, Little Deal, which focused on personal wellness, problem-solving, and strategies for healthy emotional regulation. And I know that Purchase is in the middle of our Wellness Week, so we'll report on that at our next meeting. Moving on to athletics, we have a really exciting, for the sixth-grade students, an intramural club. So the athletics department and coaching staff developed a new program for all sixth graders, not all sixth graders if you choose to sign up, but the inaugural intramural club basketball will take place this year from November 8th to December 1st. So it's open to just sixth-grade students. It develops fundamental skills, teamwork, and gameplay, and is led by the certified Harrison athletic coaches. So registration begins October 20th, and it's first come, first served. On senior night for our Huskies football team, they defeated the Eagles of Eastchester 7-0. The only touchdown was scored on a pass from Citro to Croupy. The team defeated Horace Greeley 42-0 for its second straight shutout, with the win secured the league championship. So congratulations, boys. And also, actually, Joe Croupy was named Low-Hud Player of the Week for Week Six for his performance during the Huskies' win against.
He should have been. That catch was incredible. I was standing in the end zone. He had barely a toe in, but he caught that ball. It's a great game.
The Huskies varsity soccer team defeated New Rochelle 1-0 on a goal by Nico Acacello in overtime on a penalty kick. And on senior night, the Huskies defeated Marinac 1-0 behind a goal from Jay Viola. Luke Pritchettello held Marinac to a shutout. And the boys' soccer team finished the regular season as the fifth-ranked team in Section One Class AA. So they will play Horace Greeley on Friday in the first round of the sectional playoffs at the high school. That should be an exciting game. The girls' soccer team ends the regular season with a 2-1 win over New Rochelle. With this win, the Huskies clinched a share of the league title. So the Husky girls, the soccer team finished the regular season 13-3 and is the fourth seed in Section One Class AA. And they will play on Saturday versus Carmel at 11:00 a.m. at the high school in the first round of the sectional playoffs. We have lots to update on tonight.
I know. It's been a long time. We haven't had a meeting in three weeks.
It's been a few weeks, but there's so much exciting news. The girls' tennis team, a 6-1 win against Ardley on Senior Day. The Huskies had a doubleheader defeating New Rochelle six sets to one and Pelham five sets to two. The Huskies defeated Rye in a big-league matchup, and Alexia Landsberg and Inez Zayat, sorry if I'm butchering the last name, but, okay, qualified for the New York State Tennis Doubles Tournament and earned all section honors. So congratulations. That's a really solid win. Our Huskies cheer took home first place in their Poughkeepsie competition. So well done. The Huskies volleyball team defeated Scarsdale three sets to two. Lily Seibel and Kyra Ripa led the way for the Huskies, who needed the fifth set to secure the win. And in the most recent game, the Huskies defeated Scarsdale three sets to nothing. The team was led again by Lily Seibel with 31 assists, Alexia Cozzelli with 15 digs, and Olivia Navarona with 14 kills.
Some of Lily's stats are almost hard to believe.
Yeah. 31 assists. The girls' swim team has been having an excellent season. Sophia Bontikov qualified for the New York State Championship in the 200 Individual Medley and the 100 Breaststroke. Seniors Mako Suzuki 100 Fly and Kelly Newman 100 Free both qualified for the Section One Championship, as well as freshman Angelina Linkiza 50 Free and 100 Breaststroke. The Huskies finished the regular season with back-to-back wins over the road, on the road over Yorktown and John Jay High School. That sounds like a pretty solid season so far.
Yes, ma'am.
And the Huskies, the field hockey team, finished the regular season as the 11 seed in Section One Class B. They will face the number six seed in Yorktown in the first round of the section playoffs on Saturday, the 21st, at Yorktown. So best of luck in the playoffs. And just to keep an eye on the district calendar, as I always mention, but we have had a very busy week of bond presentations throughout all of the, all six schools' PTE meetings and the last two. So tomorrow morning, we'll be at Purchase at 9:15 a.m. and on Friday at Harrison Ave as well, 9:15 a.m. And just to remind the community, if anyone is interested or has missed their school's PTE meeting, they're welcome to join. And again, we have presentations from previous board meetings in September recorded that you can watch online and all of, everything is also on the district website and any information that anyone would choose. And we are also hosting the college fair at the high school on October 25th for students to...
One of my favorite days at the high school. Over 100 colleges. Great.
So just to pass it back over to you, I don't know if there was anything else you wanted to update. We went a little bit out of order, but...
Hmm, let me look. I think I want to get to the presentation because we have some people that are staying up late tonight. My fabulous team is here, and we have a special guest tonight. I can't wait to hear from her. Dr. Mohol, come on up. So we're going to talk about some of the work that we did this summer, and Dr. Hodna Conrad is going to tell us a little bit about how we're tracking those results and some other really good things, because we don't just do things, we kind of see if they're working. So, good evening, Lisa.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight and to share a recap of our summer program. Well, our slides will come up in a second. We have a team here tonight with us who are going to share some highlights and highlight one particular program, but really, it's a collective effort of so many people, teachers, part of our leadership team, all throughout the organization, who start very early in the year, imagining what the summer could be. And there's two people who aren't here presenting tonight, who were so important, both behind the scenes all summer long, but also in helping us prepare for this presentation, and that's Mrs. Stephanie Goldman and Mrs. Dominique Peano. They were our supervisors of the elementary summer program, and they really paid attention to every detail and did so much behind-the-scenes work for us in preparation for tonight. I'd like to thank them as well. So if you were there with us on opening day, you heard Dr. Wool's presentation, and in that presentation, he challenged us to see our students, to see our works with our hearts and with our minds. And I really believe this presentation, as we were preparing for it, shows you what that looks like in action, really thinking about who our students are, what would excite them, what would engage them, who are our teachers, where are they in their personal journeys, and what would excite and engage them as well. We asked, how can we better see and respond to the students in front of us, and how can we maximize their engagement and our own creativity and innovation through that process? So, over the summer, we had 30 curiosity camps for our elementary students. We had academic supports and extensions to help students get ready for the challenges they've decided to take on in the coming year, and we had almost 20 additional secondary enrichment opportunities. In the elementary curiosity camps, we really tried to push ourselves to think about, how should these evolve and change as we're on this PYP, the Primary Years Program Journey? How should inquiry play a primary role? How can we provide lots of opportunities for students to build their background knowledge, to explore things that they're curious about, and to have fun along the way? Some of the courses are similar, but we tried to change them so that if a student came back, it wouldn't be the same class twice. And our teachers had so many ideas that even though there was maybe an art class last year, it looked a little different this year. Our students were excited about learning, and our teachers were really excited about teaching, and there's nothing better than walking into a classroom and that you can just feel the energy and the excitement. When we really see the students in front of us, it's easy, it becomes so much easier to think about what's going to keep them interested, what's going to encourage them to keep going even when it gets hard, and to continue their journeys of exploring topics that they become passionate about along the way. One of the programs that we're really excited about is very different than, I think, anything that we've done in the past, and we called it Reading with the Huskies. So I'm going to invite Dr. Kanter to come up and tell you a little bit about that program and what it looked like.
This might have been my favorite thing this summer. And it started with a thought that Lisa had, and then Dr. Kanter built on it, and we're going to hear actually from one of the Husky readers, I think, too. Hi, Dr. Kanter.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm excited to share this because in June or May, we came here to talk about this idea, and we kind of were on a tour, meeting parents and talking with kids about, how do we get our students to read over the summer? It's like a forever problem, forever. As a parent, it's a struggle. And so that was really the inception of this program. How do we get really good books into kids' hands? How do we create viral energy about reading? How do we help parents? Because summer reading is always a chore and a challenge. And at the same time, how do we build leadership with our high school students? So Dr. Mohol kind of pitched the idea, and I ran with it. And in doing that, to answer all those questions, we created this program called Reading with the Huskies. And it really just allowed kids to choose books. We helped choose those books that are all series. We encouraged parents to have them read, but the incentive was that in midsummer, they would meet up with some high school students, and these high school students would meet them in a book talk online. And it was short and sweet, but enough where they can really engage them. So I could tell you how wonderful it is, but Marisol is one of our leaders from the high school, and I'm going to ask her to share with you her experience as a student leader in this new experience.
Hi. My name is Marisol Papoucha. First, I want to thank you for having me tonight. I was excited for the opportunity to share my experience with Reading with the Huskies. Unfortunately, my partner, Annalise, couldn't make it tonight, but I am talking on behalf of both of us. As someone who has a younger brother in the district, I understand the struggle younger students face when it comes to staying on top of summer reading. Reading with the Huskies was something that showed students that there are books for everyone, and that reading doesn't have to be a chore, but an opportunity to enhance imagination and creativity. As an avid reader myself, I enjoy fantasy and sci-fi novels, as well as Annalise, which is why we were excited to choose The Last Kids on Earth as our book option. As for the experience with my group, I was amazed by their commentary and analysis because as someone who loves literature, it was such an uplifting moment to see younger students making connections between the plot and overall thematic concept. I look forward to more Harrison students joining this program because it not only prioritizes summer reading, but also propels growth and progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Marisol.
Marisol had a tough job. It was midsummer, and she had to engage, I think it was like six to 10 students over Zoom about a book. And when we talked earlier tonight, I said, what did you expect? She thought, her and Annalise and all of our other Reading with the Huskies, that it would be really quiet. If you'd ask any teacher what teaching on Zoom is like, it's really quiet, and kids turn off their screens. But in this case, these kids lit up. She said that they were so engaged and so excited and so analytical, and she was so surprised at how engaged they were. And that was the same kind of feedback we got from parents. Parents said to us that, I had one parent who reached out to me and said, my child never reads over the summer, and he wouldn't put down his book. This is what created that excitement over reading. So we're really excited because the reviews came back pretty good, and we are excited to continue this program because we know the importance of summer reading.
Don't leave yet because I have questions because there are so many things you did that were so smart and so strategic. So every book that the students were exposed to were books in a series.
That's right.
And I know you were talking viral effect, and I know that your field testing showed that it really caught on. Did it work?
It worked. I mean, Ms. Conrad, Ms. Hodna Conrad, we're looking at all the data to see if we see that in their reading. And what we know from like our own background in literacy is that it is important, summer reading is really important. It's really important to continue and gain that volume over the summer. But we don't have, we don't really have structures for that. So this created that structure, and then it also helped parents with a curated list because sometimes it's just finding the right book. So we picked books that were really exciting for kids, and those books are still happening in school. We still see kids picking them.
And then the other question you called me with, which may, just want us to do this year, year-round. So have you figured that out yet?
I have not figured that out yet.
Can you work on that?
But I have a lot of students who are interested from the high school. That's the other piece of this. It like was great for our elementary readers, but it really created like a leadership in our high school with our high school students and the elementary students and created that community, which is really exciting to see.
Just a great job, Jamie. We really are excited. Are we going to hear from you later about the college essay part?
You are. But I'm going to pass it on now to Ms. Hodna Conrad about our Bridges literacy.
Dr. Hodna Conrad, I can't wait to hear about this. You've worked so hard on it. Marisol, thank you for coming. If you need to go home and do your homework, we understand and we appreciate your time.
Wonderful. So as you've heard this evening, we've been working incredibly hard to make our summer programming as impactful as possible so that we can really reach the hearts and minds of all of our students. So when it comes to Bridges, the Bridges program for our youngest students, we, over the previous two years, had done a deep analysis of the impact of the program. And based on the findings of those studies, we decided to make a few shifts to the structure of the program for this most recent Bridges experience. So those shifts included returning the focus to our earliest students, our kids in kindergarten, first and second grade, providing smaller group instruction, which really allowed us to personalize the experience, to really use data to drive our instructional decisions, and to really pinpoint the needs of individual children and provide them just the right exposure to different instructional practices to meet their individual needs. We also embedded more opportunities for authentic reading and writing experiences. So as opposed to just doing skill-based work in isolation, we really helped scaffold that transfer so that if kids were learning some phonics concept, they could immediately put it into practice in real books or real writing experiences. And then the last shift we made was to include an encore enrichment period. So kids had an opportunity to engage in art and music and PE across their Bridges experience. Let's see if I can work this one. Is it this? There we go. So we really elicited the feedback of teachers and students and parents to find out, how did these shifts impact student experience and student outcomes? So the reviews were very glowing. We found that the teachers saw that there was much more purposeful instruction that took place as a result of many of these shifts. In particularly, having a sole focus on literacy was something that the teachers really appreciated. They felt that they could take a deep dive and really hone in on the needs of each individual student. They found that that small group size really did allow them to personalize the learning for their students, so they were able to do more extensive assessments because they had fewer students to assess, and they were able to really use that assessment data to make their instructional decisions. And they found that the structure of the program really allowed them to meet their students' needs.
Maggie, just remind the board of how big the classes were.
They ranged, it depended. They ranged from about four to 10 students. They also really appreciated having encore as a part of the program. These kids are working incredibly hard, even though it's a half-day program. It's a lot for these little people to experience through the day. So it was so joyful to see them to be able to take those breaks, to really have an engaging and enriching experience in art and music and PE. And it also, because the, the structure of the program allowed kids, half of the group to go to the encore, the teacher was then able to even make the group sizes smaller so that he or she could work with even more personalized, smaller groups. So we also... So we also surveyed the students to find out what was their perception of their experience over the summer. A hundred percent of the kids said that they felt that they did grow as readers over the course of the program, which is saying a lot because it was a fairly short three-week experience for them. They also felt more positive about reading in general and about themselves as readers. And then finally, we had a lot of really great parent feedback. In particular, parents really pointed out the impact on writing, which somewhat surprised us. Writing hadn't really been an instructional focus in previous summers. And this time, even though it wasn't the sole focus, it was something that was returned to time and time again. And both parents and teachers and students themselves really saw the impact of that. So one parent in particular really made an effort to reach out to the teacher to let her know that her son's writing had really improved. And not only did his writing improve in terms of skills, but his, his attitude towards writing really came along. He really enjoys writing, which he didn't necessarily before.
Can we talk a little bit of how we're going to track kids that were in the program as they move through the year to see if that, that bounce sticks?
Sure. Yeah, that's a great question. So we have been hard at work revising our assessments for our foundational skills for our students in the primary grades to really be able to track the impact, as Dr. Wohl is saying, not only across the summer, but also across the school year. So with that shift, the assessments we did over the summer align with the assessments we're doing over the school year. So we'll be able to really see in a one-to-one sort of analysis how students did over the summer and be able to track them over time as well. So that will take a little bit of time to, to do that statistical analysis.
Yeah, it definitely will. But I think the shifts were warranted. I just want to point out that Maggie's relatively new, her second year, and she worked really hard to revamp this entire program with the team to great praise and review. I'm always interested because teachers spoke to me specifically about how much more effective they felt they were able to be in the new structure. So I think sometimes teachers are our best audience because they're doing the work, but that meant a great deal, I think, to them to feel like the, the changes that needed to be made were made. So thank you.
I think another unintended consequence, but benefit, was that teachers really felt that they grew as professionals.
As professionals, yeah, I heard the same story.
As a result of the shifts.
Thank you.
All right, back to Dr. Kanter.
Something wrong?
So another highlight of the summer is our college essay course. This is not a new course by any means. It's been around forever, but it is one of our well-attended courses. We had over almost 150 students attend the course. And what's different that we have adjusted and adapted is that we're trying to make the course more of a writing process. So students meet over the summer on Monday through Thursday, and it's really about brainstorming, collecting ideas. But then we meet again in the fall, which we just met a few Saturdays ago during the brainstorm. And that's where they receive a tremendous amount of feedback on revision and editing. And a lot of students, they need that time in between to process where they are, and so this course really allows for that. Teachers are giving direct targeted feedback, like every single student was met with and they were given feedback on their writing. So kids responded with saying like, I wouldn't have even started if this program didn't exist. I really like, like where I landed. So kids really feel confident. So this is one of the programs that I think is a success forever. So we just wanted to share that.
And the last bit that we just wanted to share with you is while all this is going on for our students, we had a full catalog of professional learning taking place this summer. So we offered 42 different courses. We had 644 registrations and 210 teachers participated. We try to listen to the feedback we get from teachers, think about where we're headed and how we can best prepare ourselves and our teams to be able to really enter the new year full of energy and ready to do the work ahead. It's also a great opportunity for us to partner with people we don't necessarily get to work with as much during the course of the year. So teachers and administrators are partnering together. Mr. Courtwright and Ms. Colonna partnered to teach a class. We had, Mrs. Ronaldo is here tonight. She partnered with me to teach a class. We had some assistant principals helping with one of our directors. Some of the courses that we were most excited about were new because this was really the first year we were able to offer courses with a focus in PYP, in the principles of IB that weren't accessible to our elementary teachers in the past. So we could really capitalize on that full continuum. And our teachers said how much they enjoyed being able to learn from teachers at the secondary level or vice versa, who they may not interact with on a regular basis in our, during the year, professional learning. So we have a couple of videos from teachers who participated. The first one, Mrs. Clampett is going to give us a general feedback about the offerings. And the second one, Mrs. Tracker is going to tell us about one particular class that had an impact on her thinking.
This summer, me was my favorite. In all my 15 years at Parsons, I've never seen such a diverse course was offered. I would make a pickup. And Mindset Class, a high-level adventure class, which I didn't even know we had at Mount of Three School Teacher, a Family Montage, and a Philip course. So I really got to have a very diverse course open this summer, and I really felt like we offered, because really we're very mindful of what teachers would really want.
Hi, I'm a teacher at Parsons, and this summer I took the text choice course, and I've been thinking about it ever since. The course helped me really come back to school this year, renew the energy and interest in getting my classroom library to a place back, will be beneficial for kids. We were introduced to lots of ideas in this course, one of them being the idea of a text tool that we were given to use to kind of lead through our libraries and see what books are good. Are we appropriate books? Do we have books that appeal to kids? Do we have new books? Do we have books across a variety of interests for kids? And the process of pulling through our books and embedding them with this text tool was really eye-opening and really helpful and about my library to a much better place. Thinking about my library in those terms was, was new and eye-opening to me.
And this work that we're doing really continues throughout the year. That same viral energy that we hope to see around students with reading, we all want that viral energy about our work. And to bring that to our, our thinking for the district, for our students, is, is really a wonderful opportunity. And we just want to thank all of you for giving us that chance to do that work.
And I know at some point, we're going to be bringing Mrs. Egan to talk about some of the summer work that she's done with our E and L component. It's so big, it doesn't fit in the package tonight. And our Faze program, our special education program, which runs year-round, we're also going to give you a high-level summary of those programs at a future meeting. So thanks to everybody for coming out, your hard work. This is a tough thing to do in a consent, a content setting, but we appreciate your time. And I think now in the interest of time, we should shift to the annual audit. I'm going to suggest that Mr. Puccio might want to open it and then turn it over to Tim. Does that work? As the chair of the audit committee, Dino?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome Scott Olling here, our auditor, and I want to go over a few highlights. Revenues were up 1.2 million, higher than expenditures for the year. The significant revenue variances included FEMA reimbursement for COVID supplies of a million, interest income of 2.3 million, sales tax of 2.9 million. Capital reserve balance, which we just started this year, is 2.4 million. Eight million is the maximal allowed. And, uh, and our one audit control finding school lunch fund balance, we have 835,000 and we're just a little bit over that in excess. And this year, we plan to do the following, to use up some of that access free Friday breakfast, school lunch program, renovate the Preston kitchen, and the middle school kitchen reconfiguration.
I know the committee has met several times. You want to just introduce the whole committee?
Absolutely. So Dino Puccio is our chairperson, Rob Sullivan and Dennis DiLorenzo had to leave, but those three gentlemen are on the audit committee, do a fantastic job. We do spend quite a bit of time throughout the year talking about the internal audit, the external audit, and I really appreciate their feedback to me and for their due diligence and making sure that the financial statements are, are accurate and are well-represented. So with that, we do have Scott Olling here this evening, and Scott is a partner with PKF O'Connor Davies, who is in charge of the, of the external audit. So I'd like to ask Scott to come up. And Dino did a good job to kind of summarize some of the things that Scott's going to say tonight. Scott will go into some more detail on the financial statements so the board has a really good understanding of, of what our financial picture was on June 30th of 2023.
But before you sit down, I'm going to spoil the ending because the board's read the audit. This is really a credit to you, Tim, and to Joe and to the entire business department. This is a really clean, beautifully represented piece of work. So, hi, Scott, how are you?
I'm okay. How are you?
Good.
There we go.
We said to see Scott once or twice a year.
Once or twice a year. I think Dino stole all my thunder, so I'm done. It's late anyway.
Okay. Good night.
All right, no, thank you. I also want to thank Tim and Joe. You know, we do a lot of school audits every summer. It's a very long summer for us. And, you know, this is one of the, you know, I could say it's one of the jewels of our audit portfolio. You know, really, you know, it's really a pleasure to work with people who know, you know, what they're talking about and, and, you know, really produce, you know, this audit and, you know. So thank you. So I do want to reiterate the most important thing about the, the audit report that we went over in depth with the audit committee the last couple of weeks. I also want to mention that I'm here with Alicia DeRico, who is the manager on the audit this year. She really did all the work. I just come up and get the credit, so.
I know, I saw her trapped in a room for weeks.
So the most important thing about the audit report for us is the auditor's opinion, which is at the front of the audit report. That's really the only thing that is ours. The rest, the rest of this is yours, even though we prepare it on behalf of the district. We've issued what's known as a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements. That's the highest form of assurance that an auditor can provide any client. It basically says that we believe these financials fairly present, you know, what happened financially in the district for the year end of June 23. I'm just going to touch briefly, Dino hit some of the highlights, but the general fund for the school district, which is what the voters vote upon each year to give you authorization to, to spend, appears on page 57 of the full audit report. You had estimated revenues for the district to be approximately 126 and a half million dollars, much like most of the school districts in Westchester. That money comes from the levy of property taxes, with a very small amount coming from state aid and a little amount from a sales tax distribution that comes to all school districts from Westchester County. The good news for the district this year is really a revenue side situation, as, as was just pointed out. You estimated this 126 and a half million when you adopted the budget. The revenues actually came in at just over 130 million, so approximately 4.1 million better than what you anticipated. I will tell you, that's one of the highest revenue surpluses ever, you know, since I've been involved with this district. And it's really from three areas. Sales tax, you don't control that. It comes from the county. The county shares sales tax that it gets with all the school districts and municipalities in Westchester, other than the big city like Yonkers, New Rochelle, they have their own deals. You estimated about 2.3, and because the county did very well on sales tax post-pandemic, sales tax was coming in, inflation, as we all know. So your sales tax came in better by about 500,000. The really big, good news for the district was interest earnings. When this budget was developed back in early 2022, interest rates were still near zero on the schools' bank accounts, on, you know, your personal bank accounts. Nobody was paying any interest. Obviously, the Federal Reserve has significantly increased interest rates in the last year plus. The district, because of its very strong financial position, was able to have that cash instead of earning, you know, 0.1% like it did for the last decade, you know, probably averaging close to, you know, over the full year, about 4% overall. So whereas you had only estimated a very small amount for interest earnings, you actually took in about 2.3 million dollars. So you did almost 2 million better than budget in, in that area. That's about half the revenue surplus from that. And then you also did not budget for, but received FEMA money for the various things that have gone on from FEMA, and you took in a million dollars, you know, from previously expended things. So that was a million dollars. So a million dollars in FEMA, 2 million in, in, you know, interest earnings, and a half a million in sales tax, better than your plan, accounts for most of the revenue surplus.
And just to remind the public, that, that reimbursement on FEMA was for the air filtration systems we bought the year prior.
For COVID.
And that was.
COVID-related expenses that were eligible for.
That was fantastic recovery on our part.
Yeah. Now we go to the expense side, what you're spending those resources on. The district had budgeted approximately originally about 129.3 million dollars to spend. That was increased slightly during the year. These are operating expenditures to about 130 million. The good news is the district only spent about 127 million, so less than obviously what you planned. There are about a million dollars of what we call encumbrances, which are purchase orders that are committed things to do, that you committed out of last year's resources, but were not completed by the end of the year. A lot of things are generally, these are in buildings and grounds as you work on these kind of small projects over the summer before the kids come back in September. So you had about a million dollars of encumbrances. So basically, between what you spent of 127 million, plus a million that's going to be spent, but kind of earmarked already is 128 out of the 130, you had about 2.2 million unspent. So on 130 million dollars, that's really less than 2%.
Yep.
I'm not good with math, I guess, but it's about 1 and 1/2%, I think. So that's very tight. That's not, you know, that's spending 98 and 1/2% of what you thought you were going to spend. So really, the story this year is when you do apply that 2 million of savings on the expense side and the 4 million surplus on the revenue side, obviously, the revenues is really what drove the results this year, you end up with what we call a 6.4 million dollar budget surplus. You did 6.4 better than your plan. What was your plan? Your original plan was to actually use fund balance to balance your, your spending plan. When you adopted the 22, 23 budget, you planned to spend approximately 3.7 million more than what your revenue was going to come in at. And you had fund balance, you used your savings account to bridge that gap. That was revised during the year. Tim would have come to the board seeking board resolutions to amend the budget and increase that use of fund balance by about another million, too, you know, to cover tax surcharges and, and other unexpected expenses. So your final budget anticipated your fund balance declining by 6 million dollars if everything came in exactly on budget. But because of the positive results on the revenues and the savings on expenditures, not only did you not have to dip into your fund balance of 6 million, but you actually added, and as Dino said earlier, 1.2 million to your fund balance. And that's where we get that budget surplus, what was planned versus what happened, net of the million dollars of encumbrances, and that's where we get to that 6.4 budget surplus, better than your, your plan. But the 1.2 million surplus is what gets added to your fund balance or your savings account, which brought your end-of-year fund balance from, that started the year with 34 million dollars, and it brought you to just over 35, almost 35 and 1/2 million dollars. Now that fund balance is not just one number. It's really broken up into several different categories. The largest portion of your 35 million dollar fund balance is what we call restricted fund balance.
Twelve, I think.
Oh, I am now on page 50, 5-0.
5-0, I was looking at 12.
So 26.7 million of the 35 million fund balance is restricted. And I guess mathematically, that's 60 to 70%. Somebody could, mathematician could check me on that. that's 60 to 70%. Somebody could, mathematician could check me on that. Restricted fund balance is restricted by general municipal law or education law, but all of these restrictions required board action. So none of this could happen without board action under that state umbrella of rules. The biggest item in your restricted fund balance is for tax surcharary claims. You have about 10 million of that 26 million is set aside to fund tax surcharary claims. Harrison gets hit with a ton of tax surcharary claims, as do most school districts in Westchester. This again represents a portion of the claims, you know, that have been filed. And what this allows you to do is as these cases settle, it's been a little slow the last few years with COVID ramping up again, you know, this allows you to pay for these things without borrowing. Other districts have had to borrow incur interest costs to pay off these surcharary claims.
And the one thing I just want the public to know is tax surrogaries in most communities are residential. In Harrison, they tend to be very large commercial properties where the payouts are much more significant. Country clubs, corporate headquarters, for example, the Renaissance, we were just talking about that tonight, the Renaissance Hotel, which has been sold, has three years of back tax surrogaries, and that will probably run somewhere south of $400,000 for each of those years, or in total for those three years. So I want people, when they see that money, to understand this is not a homeowner coming in and getting a refund of 1,000 bucks. It's quite a bit more challenging.
Moving down the restricted list, I'm just trying to hit some of the bigger ones. You have approximately, there's two numbers there for the ERS retirement contribution, a total of about 8.1 million, 7.1 million. You've set aside money to fund future contributions to the state employees' retirement system for your non-certified staff. And that's really there, you know, if the state's pension system, if their investments tank, and they have to have enough funding by the actuaries that want a certain amount of funding, if they've lost money in the stock market, then guess where they get the money from? From all the school districts in the state. They'll raise the rates that they charge. It's based on percentage of payroll. So this would be there that if there was a big spike one year, rather than having to tax to cover that increased cost, you have this pot available to help you pay that. You've also set aside money for the teachers' retirement system, 4.3 million. This one does have certain formula restrictions on it, on how much can be put in there each year, how much it can grow to. You're not near that. But you do have 4.3 million in there. The teachers' retirement system cost, of course, is a bigger expense for the district. This year, you spent 6 million in pension contributions into the pension plan. This year, it was based on approximately 10.3% of every certified dollar of certified salary that was paid. So in other words, if you had a teacher who made 100,000, you paid 10,000 into the pension system. So in the past, that rate has been in some as high, back in the 90s, it was in the 20-something percent range. So even if it had doubled to 20%, you'd be going from 6 million to 12 million. An extra 6 million on a budget, you know, of 130 million is a pretty sizable increase. Don't expect it to do that. You know, they try to smooth things out. So even if the stock market has a bad year for them, you know, they smooth it over like a four or five year period. So you don't get crazy spikes in what you pay. But again, you have 4.3 million set aside, can only be used for that purpose. And then the other two big ones in there, and Dino mentioned it earlier, is the voters authorize you to establish a future capital project reserve with a maximum of 8 million, you know, for certain things. It usually has a 10-year life. And you are allowed to fund that reserve with basically surplus that you can generate. And you put money in there and it'll earn interest. And once you contribute the 8 million, that's all you're allowed to do. Of all these restrictions, as I said, all of them require board action. This is the only one that required voter authorization to create it. It will also require voter authorization to spend from it. So this cannot just be board action. It has to be put up for like a proposition generally at budget adoption time, saying, hey, we want to spend the, when it grows to 8 million, on whatever it is. So that's there. And that's where some of your surplus was put this year. It was the first time that that money's in there. So it has 2.4 million in it. And then you also have money set aside for debt service, about 1 million. So that was leftover capital monies from prior years, accumulated interest on unspent capital monies can only be used to offset debt service. So that's your 26 million out of your 35 million of total fund balance. You then have this million dollars of encumbrances that automatically amended the budget you're in now. Probably most of that has already been spent by this point in October.
Mostly gone.
You then gave back from what we call unassigned fund balance, 2.2 million in property tax relief. So you gave back 2.2 million here and another hundred, another million dollars in from the restricted pot of money. So a total of 3.2 million is what you use to balance the 2324 budget. So that is a lot of money to use. And depending how things go, you know, if revenues don't come in as great this year, or better than your budget plan, and expenses maybe are a little tight, you know, to the budget, you have to generate 3.2 million in expenditure savings or revenue surpluses. If you don't, then your fund balance will go down. If you generate more than 3.2, fund balance will go up by that difference. So it's really important, obviously, to monitor the budget, especially the revenue side, which I don't anticipate will generate this kind of, you know, surplus in the current year, unless you got some
There's no magic.
way of making that happen. So that's not going to happen. So what that really means is out of the 35 million total fund balance, when you take the money from restricted of 26, and this 3.2 million of encumbrances and what you use to balance the budget, what you're left with is 5.4 million. And that can, that amount is unassigned fund balance, free and clear. So out of the 35, it's this 5.4 million. That number's not allowed to be more than 4% of the budget for the next year. This number is 4% because the difference was put into the capital, you know, reserve. So you're at the maximum that you're allowed to be. In, you know, somewhere over the last year or two, you were above it. A lot of schools were above it during COVID because, you know, you adopted a regular budget and then everything shut down and everything, you know, went up. But now, with, you know, the planning that you've done and where you've gotten to, you're back at the 4%. So you're really at, you know, the best you can be at. You've fully funded, you know, these different reserves. You got future capital money going there, and you're at the 4%. So, you know, really good job. And that's really all I had. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any members of the board have any questions for Scott?
So thank you very much, Scott.
You're welcome.
I agree with your assessment. And I'm really excited about the capital reserve because as we push forward a bond referendum, that will offset the taxpayer costs. So it was a very timely thing that Tim suggested and the taxpayers approved. But thanks for your work.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your detailed review.
All right, Madam President, that will conclude the superintendent's report.
Okay.
And we can go back to the agenda if you'd like.
Great. So moving on to the personnel report, I'll take the personnel report on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, certificated personnel, one, regular appointment, SED clearance received, two, temporary appointment, SED clearance received, three, extra compensation appointment, four, leave of absence without pay, five, change of status, B, non-certificated personnel, one, resignation, two, resignation for the purpose of retirement, three, regular appointment, SED clearance received, four, temporary appointment, SED clearance received, five, change of status, six, rescind appointment, C, other, one, student, teacher, observer, two, contracted service provider. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, one comment. You know, we run a program here where we take our most talented teachers and we ask them to engage in the Bank Street Future School Leaders Academy. And then they are mentored by me for over a two-year period and another district colleague. And tonight, we have Mrs. Goldman leaving to have another baby joyfully. And our own Jen Ronaldo will be assuming the position of assistant principal at the Parsons Memorial School, and she's here tonight. So if the board says yes, which I anticipate they will, congratulations, Jen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You made it.
Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, A, approval for Harrison High School debate team field trip to Princeton, New Jersey for a debate tournament, B, approval of Harrison High School debate team field trip to New Orleans, Louisiana for a debate tournament, C, approval of Harrison High School varsity girls' basketball team field trip to Elmira, New York for a tournament, D, approval of Harrison High School 10th through 12th graders' field trip to Calicoon for New York, Calicoon, New York for a theater conference, E, approval of Harrison High School Model Congress field trip to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania for Penn Model Congress competition, F, approval of Harrison High School marching band field trip to Washington, DC to march in the National Memorial Day Parade, G, acceptance of donation from the Black Vow Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors, H, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA, I, acceptance of gifts from Ms. Nita Singh, J, approval of CSE CPSE minutes, K, approval of CSE CPSE recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Those are some great trips.
Yeah, there's a lot of tournaments coming up.
Washington is awesome. It's great.
And I would like to give a thank you on behalf of the board for the donation from the Black Vow Giving Fund, donation from the Preston School, as well as acceptance of the gift from Ms. Nita Singh. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bless you.
None. Moving on to the finance and facilities report, A, authorization to increase budget appropriations, B, acceptance of audited financial statements for fiscal year end June 30, 2023, and approval of management letter responses, corrective action plan for year ended June 30, 2023, C, 202324 appropriation transfers, D, treasurer's report, September 2023, E, approval of telecommunications agreement with new era technology for hosted VoIP cloud solutions, F, quarterly report for the extra classroom activity funds, G, contract for educational services, Rye City School District. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, one comment. We always talk about the treasurer's report. The treasurer's actually here tonight, Joe. So thank you for doing such a good job. The audit was wonderful. I know you were a big part of that.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. The next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on November 8, 2023, 7:00 PM here at the LM Klein Middle School. We are adjourned.
Do I have a
Oh, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
You're tired.
I'm very tired. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are adjourned. Good night.